Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 6:05 on April 11th, 2016. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And would Mr. DiMedi like to lead us, please? We'll move on to a roll call. Will our Planning Director please assist us?
Yes, please let the record reflect that all Commissioners are present.
We'll go on to Approval of the Minutes, which is Item 1 for the meeting of March 28th, 2006. Is there a discussion or a motion? Vice Chair?
Yes, Chairwoman O'Connor, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, the motion was made by the Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner McCann. Please register your votes. When it comes up on our little thing. Oh, there we go. All right, and that motion passes. Three in favor, and I abstained because I was absent that day. We'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a Request to Speak Form, which is available with our Planning Secretary at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to her prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Are there any requests to speak forms? All right, so it looks as if we don't have a consent calendar, so next is public hearings. And we have Item 2 for a coastal development permit, CDP 15-0012, to process a lot-line adjustment to a shared property line within Beechwood Village Mobile Home Park in order to correct the existing encroachment of multiple mobile home pads across two parcels, 668-351-01 and 02, and it's located at 34052 Doheny Park Road. Do you have a staff report on Item 2?
Yes, Danny Giamatti is going to give the staff report, please.
Thanks for the introduction, Ursula. Good evening, Chairwoman O'Connor and fellow Planning Commissioners. CDP 15-0012 is a lot-line adjustment to a shared property line within the Beechwood Village Mobile Home Park located in Doheny Village. The lot-line adjustment has been requested by the owner to correct existing encroachments of multiple mobile home pads across two parcels. Trying to change the slide here, oh, there we go. Okay, so Beechwood Village Mobile Home Park, it's located between Doheny Park Road and Sepulveda Avenue, within Doheny Village, and the park makes up almost 12 acres of land and is permitted, it's a permitted use within its respective zone of Commercial Residential, CR. The proposed lot-line adjustment affects the common property line of the two parcels, highlighted here in yellow, located at the center of the park, and it's that area in red. So in 2013, the park was sold to Doheny Park Associates, whom in an effort to revitalize the park began to make landscape and hardscape improvements, remodel the existing clubhouse and the pool, and install new exterior fencing and some auxiliary signage. It's also important to note that the subject parcels are part of the original San Juan by the Sea tract map. The original tract map for parcel 2 included several smaller lots for the subject property. At this particular area in Dana Point, or as it developed, changes to the tract map were really never remedied at all. So therefore, as part of this improvement plan, the owners requesting the approval of a lot-line adjustment between the subject parcels to correct the existing encroachment of multiple mobile home pads across a shared private property line. The Dana Point zoning code states that coastal development permits required for a lot-line adjustment on properties located within the coastal overlay district. Therefore, the applicant has filed the CDP for the approval of this lot-line adjustment. So this is a rendering of the existing northern parcel on the site. As you can see on the lower property line there, there's multiple mobile home pads which currently straddle this common boundary line, per property line. It's shared by parcel 1 on top of this triangular area, and parcel 2, which isn't shown, but it's a more rectangular parcel. The California Building Code does not allow structures to encroach over property lines, and the property owner would like to correct this condition without changing the development that presently exists. So this is a rendering of the proposed lot-lines for the site plan, or for the site. So the shared property line, as you can see here, is all labeled. It starts on that right-hand side of the screen, and it goes 16 feet from the existing property line in the southerly direction, where it, then it'll, the property line will continue westerly to the left, 560 feet, shown in green, at which point the perpendicular line, 14 feet in length, again shown in red on the left side of the screen there, extends to the southwest. And then finally, the line extends west in green for the last 140 feet, and it terminates at Doheny Park Road. So this is a, an image of, obviously, of the existing and proposed property lot-lines superimposed on top of the existing site. As you can see really clearly here, where that property line exists, there are multiple mobile home pads that are encroaching across this property line. So to, this adjustment will correct any building code compliance issues and bring the site into conformance. And there's no other proposed changes to the existing structures on-site as part of this coastal development permit. Therefore, staff finds that the subject property is consistent with the policies and provisions of the general plan, zoning code, and local coastal program, and recommend approval of the coastal development permit. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff? Vice Chair?
Danny, real quick, so just so I understand the request, there are no, there's no physical changes being proposed, it's paper?
None at all, it's just a ministerial cleanup item.
Okay, and then, in looking at the last page of the lot-line adjustment, there's a couple notes in regards to some underground storm drain easements, and those, excuse me, appear to be encroached upon. Is that something that's not part of this?
According to the prelim title, a lot of them are ancient, and as part of that, as I said, it's really a ministerial change. This isn't going to affect the physical changes in the future at all. Where the pads currently sit, there's, I believe, a fence that runs halfway through the old Via Serra Road, which divides the two parcels. That's all staying the same, and as far as the, as I said, as the prelim title goes, those have been abandoned.
That was it, thank you.
Commissioner McCann?
Hi Danny. A couple of questions. I want to, I want to understand, is what we're doing tonight going to solve the problem entirely? And before you answer that, on the exhibit, what's the last, the last page, the site plan now? Well, yeah, let's stay there on this one.
Okay.
So, the Mobile Home Park on the northerly portion, the northerly lot, is, appears to be triangular all the way up to a triangle point at the top left.
That is correct.
Okay, but if you look at the lot-line adjustment paperwork, it's like a cutoff triangle, and there's an east-west line that's, that's, go to the previous slide now.
Easier that way.
Okay, see the northerly line of Lot 1?
Uh huh.
It doesn't seem to extend all the way up to the triangle, so my question is, does that northerly line cross through other mobile home pads?
The northerly line does cross through other mobile home pads. That was remedied through an encroachment permit, because the parcel in question here, it borders the public right-of-way. So we were able to remedy that through an encroachment permit for the existing coaches. That being said, any new coaches that come, or that are placed on-site, the pads are placed inside of the property.
I didn't understand what you said, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm slow, can you please re-explain?
No problem. So this northerly line at the top of the triangle here?
Well, no, at the top of the, this line.
Oh, gotcha. Right.
Because on the aerial, the mobiles go all the way in the whole triangle, but do some coaches cross this line?
In reference to that, they do, but that being said, I believe, and John may have to help me with this, but I believe that that line was part of the original San Juan by the Sea development. There's also some issues with it down here as well. Those, those issues, or that part of the tract was, I'm sorry, the lot was never, was never really remedied. John, could you chime in?
Yep. The Assessor Parcel Map continues to show that, even though it was, those two parcels were formally merged years ago, so that line doesn't really exist. It's just a remainder line on the map, because it used to be there. When you actually pull a lot of the Assessor Maps, many of the original existing lots still show up as dashlines, but in the case of this, that, that line's not really there anymore.
So, okay, so if that were true, shouldn't the legal description of that parcel 1 reflect that? I can acknowledge that AP map could be wrong and that line not really be there, but in the, like on page 4 of the lot-line adjustment, for example, Exhibit B, it describes line 2 as that line.
So right, right now, we're only dealing, it's not a separate, it is, it's not technically a separate parcel. Parcel 1, we're just talking about the large triangle is parcel 1, and parcel 2 doesn't start until here, so it's just the two parcels. These are not separate parcels.
Okay, but, but, okay, so.
So you're asking why?
The way I see it, is page 4 of 8 of the lot-line adjustment package is not legally describing what you just verbally described.
No, I'd agree with that.
Okay, so.
But, again, if, if we had our Public Works Engineers here, they might be able to explain the reasoning for that, but parcel 1 is the whole triangle.
Okay, thanks. So I guess my question then goes to Jennifer. If, can we move forward hypothetically and approve this, subject to engineering revision, if that needs to be kind of checked out and modified, because it doesn't affect the lot line that's actually being adjusted?
Yes, we can. We can have Public Works take a second look at it to make sure that the legal description is correct.
And, and just to clarify, in terms of our process, this goes for full engineering review prior to come, even coming to planning. So they have looked at this, and they've found that there's no errors in it, but certainly we can include that condition just as a, just as a.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just wondering, on page 3, does that, the legal description there, does that more accurately reflect what you're considering?
The truth is, on short notice, I couldn't answer that. Graphically, on page 4, it doesn't conform with what Mr. Tilton is saying.
Okay. All right, are there any further questions for staff then, before I turn this over to the public hearing? Nope? Okay. Then I'll, I will open the public hearing, and if we could maybe have some lights as well. All right, our first speaker is Derek, and it looks like Patty. If you could state your name and city of residence, and.
Hello.
Three minutes.
I live in the first unit on the east side of the park, right there on Sepulveda, and if they take 16 feet of my yard, it's going to take a lot of my yard, and that's basically why I bought that lot, is because, because it was a big lot. And, you know, I really don't know what else to say, or what I can do, you know? I'm not in favor of it, you know? So. Any other ideas anybody has for me to say? Any, what? What? Oh, yeah. I asked permission, I built a shed in like '05, and I talked to the management about it, and they actually, I built it sort of close to the property line at the time, and they actually had me move it three feet back, which I did, and, you know, I wish they would have discussed all the property line stuff when I bought it, you know? And I really, you know, kind of caught off guard, I just heard about this yesterday, so I'm definitely not in favor of it. So, that's about all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. John, Chris, and it looks like Butcher. Please state your, okay. State your name and city of residence.
I'm in the third one there, on parcel number 2, two over from him. My mom purchased the place in parcel 1 in 2000, in 1991, for $2,000, and it ended up getting some smoke damage, and she bought one on the other side of the property that had a yard for $20,000, ten times more, because it had a really big yard. And the county, because it was unincorporated then, came out, did the survey, and she put a fence on it. The manager, Jean, she allowed the retired police officer that was in his lot, and the two old people in the next-door neighbor to mine to move their lots back to the fence prior to them selling it. They made a pretty good price on their place because of that. Then later, we've had a manager about every three or four years, a new manager. Then Richard, he came, we had a tree fall through my fence, he rebuilt my fence, I paid him a couple thousand dollars, and he said, on the end, he says, he had to move it over about a foot because there was, someone poured too much concrete on the corner. So my corner's probably out about a foot because the manager built it. We only have our managers to go by. I have a hot tub put in the back corner, three feet from the fence, where the manager allowed. I worked with Angela here, back in 2002, quite a bit over those property changes, and actually, Jean was allowing the other person to take over part of my property, and Angela, in papers that are filed with the city here, had them move that line back. So we've been in discussion with this, with the city, since 2001, and I brought up to Angela about all those issues about that property. And since these people bought it, not knowing that that property was pushed back and may not be their property, but see, it was owned by two different owners, it's, they've had that property there for more than five years, it's a prescriptive, you know, right, that they should be able to keep that, even though it's now purchased by one person, that property was over that line by the single owner for more than the five years that meets those requirements. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jesus Mata.
Hi. Yes, I am in parcel number 2, I am the second, from the right to the left, and according to the Jasmine's that they want to do, it's going to be a good piece of chunk of the yard, backyard, that is going to be taken away. And when we moved in, about five years ago, everything was right there, I mean, the fence was already built, that and everything, and now it's going to affect us big time with our shed and our garden and all the stuff that we got back there. So, I mean, I really don't know how much we can do, but it'd be very, not a good thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Larry and Sherri Edwards.
I'm in number 102, about halfway down the line. I wonder, the question seems to be from several of the residents that I've spoken with, and myself included. The paper is stating there wouldn't be any physical change. As I understand it, that means no one would be expected to move things that are now on the property, like fences, or as this gentleman is talking about, sheds. Is there not an easement, a county easement, between those two spots? Do I understand that correctly? We were told that there was a flood county easement back there. I haven't heard anybody here say specifically, no one's going to need to move their fences or their sheds, and I need to hear that. So is somebody, somebody going to give us that response?
After the public comments portion, we'll, we'll address those issues. So you'll, you'll have your answer tonight.
Great. When we put this fence up, my husband specifically put it on our area in back of our, we do have property markers on our lots, and we did specifically find them and moved them to our side, so there wouldn't be an issue with the person behind us. But like this other gentleman spoke of earlier, I do have one of the larger lots, and I would like to retain it, it would be a selling factor when I sell my home.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak on the matter that hasn't filled in the speaker slip? Now's your chance to, sir, in the blue? Please come up to the podium, we. Oh, no, no, okay. We'll get to you soon.
Oh, can I speak?
Yes.
All right.
Can you state your name again?
Are they going to rebuild, are they going to rebuild the fence?
Can you state your name again?
Yeah, my name's Derek Patty.
We're videotaped, so.
All right, hello. My name's Derek Patty. I was just wondering if they're going to rebuild the fence, or, I mean, what's going on? Are they just going to demo it, or? Each homeowner's going to have to rebuild their own fence, or?
Well, we're going to have to talk to staff and find out that question for you. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing if there's no one else that wants to speak on this matter.
Madam, Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion? I think a lot of these, it's staff's understanding that there would be no physical changes as a result of this action, although I think due to the concerns of the neighbors, the applicant is here, present here, and it might be a good opportune time for them to address the questions that are coming from the residents.
That would be great. Where is the applicant, sir? Please state your name.
Jeff Mays with JR and Civil Engineers on the land surveyor on the project. On the exhibit, you see there, the dash line at the top, which is the existing lot-line, that doesn't reflect anything in the field. So what we've done is try to move the line to more reflect the existing fence line. Now, it doesn't follow the fence exactly, because the fence wanders. But generally, we tried to hold it on the line of the existing fence, and that'll clear the encroachments. As far as, I can't answer the question about the northerly line. Subdivision Map Act says that we can only adjust a line between two recorded maps. The wedge at the top, I believe, is by deed, but we can check that with engineering to make sure, so. Any other questions on that regard?
Yes, Commissioner McCann has a question for you.
Sure.
So are you saying that the southerly line that you're talking about adjusting, you are going to adjust it approximately to the location of the existing fence? So, so as a practical matter? So, so as a practical matter, no one's yard size is changing?
Is that a practical matter? Yes, there may be some areas where the fence meanders across the line this way or that. But, uh, that's, you know, I can't speak for the owner as far as what he's gonna do with the leases currently.
So, they're not gonna move the fence, or just, this is all just legal stuff?
The fence is...
Property lines, they're just changing and on paper or something?
To my knowledge, the fence is not moving.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, so if the fence isn't moving, then people's belongings are pretty much gonna stay where they're at?
That's my understanding, yes.
Your understanding, okay.
And, and again, this was more of a ministerial act to clear the encroachments. The, uh, mobile homes to the north, the existing lot line after we surveyed it a couple of years ago, goes right through their homes. And that was a paper line, not something you see on the ground.
Okay. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Any other, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Mays, can you help me understand the structure of the... Is this a ground lease? So, you've got a master ground lease, and then the units sit on, on their own separate leases?
I believe the ownership and fee is, uh, you have an ownership and fee, and then you have the mobile home leases on top of that.
Because when I looked at the parcel map, or the assessor's map, it shows individual lots, I'm wondering...
Those individual lots on the parcel map, those are from the old, uh, by the C tract. You know, those, those are gone, the, the streets that are shown on there have all been abandoned. Yeah, this is, yeah, that's long gone.
Do you have a question? Commissioner McCann?
Sorry, I...
That's all right.
I'm not sure you're the right guy to ask, or maybe it's the city attorney. It's a, it's a follow-on to Vice Chair's question. So, someone owns the land.
Correct.
As a big parcel, yet we've had various residents come and say that they own... Do you understand what they're claiming they own?
They own a lease for, they own the, the structure.
Okay, right.
That's a fee, um, that's what they own in fee. Everything else is a lease, as far as mobile home. And there's general rules for mo- uh, mobile home parks that I'm not, I'm not up on.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to... Okay. Thank you, sir, for coming. Um, you can come up here and address the, this, this isn't a question and answer period, but you can...
Chris Butcher, the one thing, he's contractor, he's just here to draw the line. This would give them free rein to, to move our fences. Since the new, uh, owners moved in, they've been going around harassing people to get, to rid their fences, tear 'em down any way they can, and we've been there twenty-six years. And this is just an, I think, another backdoor way of saying, oh, your, your line's over six inches, you have to remove it. And then they're saying you can only put up a four-foot, three-foot fence of, of vinyl fence that's see-through, and I have a service dog in my backyard, and children on the other property. It would disturb my service dog having it back there, too, is another issue, so... That's another thing, it's just gonna give them free rein to, to push us around more than they have been. They've been trespassing on our property. They climbed up on our roofs and walked around our roofs and caused damage. So, and I talked to Angela about that, she said, call the police.
All right, thank you for that input. All right, now I'm gonna close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to the commissioners if they have questions or comments. Commissioner McCann, do you have?
Can we... Well, I found it interesting that the engineer surveyor said that they're moving the line to approximately in the location of the fence. Can we condition them to... Give like, um, use license agreements or something like that? So that the, the, the land of their lease is still, it doesn't kind of sort of matter where the exact legal PL is, as long as they still get to use out to the existing fence lines?
Uh, if you wanted to do something along those lines, I would honestly recommend continuing the public hearing, just because I would need a little bit more time. Mobile home laws are pretty complex, and so I would not feel comfortable doing something like that on the spot.
Okay, thank you.
I would, uh, be in favor of some, of a continuance, actually, because I feel like at this point, there's some information that we don't have. And, um, I think we just need a little bit more, um, to find out what the residents are concerned about, if there, if there is really a movement of this fence or not. I just don't feel comfortable, as, you know, one vote out of, you know, the four of us. I mean, I'd like to see what my other commissioners feel, but that's the, how I'm leaning right now.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I think one thing that's important for me to understand is exactly what does each mobile home have a right to? So, do they have a ground lease? And does this lot line adjustment modify their ground lease in any way? We, we certainly don't want to approve something that strips somebody of a right that they currently have. But we also don't wanna take away the right of the, the, the property owner as well. So, if we could find out exactly how those are held, and what the, if, the effect of this lot line adjustment is on those individual units, um, that would be helpful for me.
Uh, Commissioner Murphy, how, how, how do you feel about it?
I, I'm in agreement, because I, I think it is murky. I'm not comfortable with what I'm hearing. Uh, I mean, there's a lot of answers we don't have. Plus, um, the coastal development permit, uh, goes to the, it's, is a process of the lot line adjustment to a shared property line within Beechwood Village Mobile Park in order to correct the existing encroachment of multiple mobile home pads across two parcels. It's, it certainly is not very definitive. And it, it doesn't seem to give us a path to go through to see what their steps are. And it sounds like the owners there really don't have enough information themselves. They really haven't included in properly.
All right. Uh, Commissioner McCann, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I, I concur, uh, with my fellow commissioners. I think that, uh, I, I concur completely. I don't, I appreciate and applaud the property owner for wanting to clear up something that's, that's not correct. But then we don't wanna fix a problem and create other problems, or thirty or forty other problems. So, let's take the time, and I don't see a compelling urgency to do this tonight. So, I concur, concur completely with the continuance. I think that we should, um, as long as we have the time, go back and look at that northerly PL issue and just understand that. Because if they're fixing an issue, if there's other issues on that side, let's consider having, asking them to fix them all at once. And then the other question I would have is, do we want to ask, I don't know what kind of notification was given, uh, or notices to the individual leaseholders out there? But if we wanna ask that they be noticed of the continuance? Uh, and that's just kind of an open question.
Well, I may, they were all noticed. Not a problem to continue this, there's no urgency that I'm aware of. Really, the applicant would be the best one to be able to talk about any urgency that they have. I do wanna let you all know, just so we're also better prepared when we bring this before you next time, but this would've been, if this were not in the coastal zone, a ministerial action, meaning it wouldn't have come to the planning commission at all. And the only reason that it's coming to you is because the coastal act requires anything, subject to the subdivision map act, um, requires a coastal development permit. So, it's been brought to you, um, it's the coastal development permit that you're looking at, um, related to the lot line adjustment. You know, currently, the way it sits, if the property owner, these coaches, where they currently sit and where the fence currently is, they're encroaching on other, on another parcel. And they legally would have the ability today to do some enforcement action on that. Instead, it seems like they're trying to accommodate the existing built environment and adjust the lot line so that folks can stay where they are and have their structures remain. So, that is our understanding of the intent from the applicant. It was to be accommodating to, um, the folks here that, um, again, lease their, they have ground leases. So, it is, we would not have been able to process this application if there were multiple fee owners. So, there's one fee owner, um, which was enabled us to process this application. But, uh, nonetheless, we will bring this, um, before you, um, at the next hearing. If you continue it to a date certain, we don't have to renotice it. It, this is the, the notice, because we noticed it for the first time. And, um, was it five hundred feet to all owners and three hundred to occupants?
Do we want to, uh, continue this to the next meeting without notice? Or do we want to continue it with notices? Or do we want to, um, how, how do you wanna proceed?
Well, I'm always in favor of another notice.
Okay. I was kind of feeling that way.
That's not too arduous, you know, for the city to get out of...
And just to be clear, even if we do continue it, we can direct staff to renotice it, even though, under law, we're not required to do so. Um, but we will need a motion to reopen the public hearing, and then we need a date certain. And if I am correct, it's going to be the, no, not May twenty-third, May, May ninth.
May ninth, okay. Is that right? So then, uh, do we have a, oh, I'll, I'll make, just for ease, I'll, I'll make a motion to continue this to May ninth and with notification.
And can I add to reopen the public hearing?
And reopen the public hearing.
Just so that we have a clear record.
Yeah, and I'm reopening the public hearing. So, there's a motion, I made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the vice chair is seconded, please register your votes for the continuance to May ninth. And that motion passes four to zero, so it's gonna be continued, please come back, May ninth. And, uh, um, and it's going to be, the notification will be sent to your neighbors as well, so, hang in there.
Do we have questions?
Uh, this isn't a question and answer, but what I would, um, recommend is if you, uh, you know, call staff or send an email or, uh, and we'll make sure that those questions are addressed at, in a public hearing, at our next public hearing, so...
I just wonder why our management isn't here, like, telling us, you know, anything about this, you know? Like, sort of walking us through it, you know? It's weird.
Well, you can talk to your manager, and, um, you know, staff is here to help you, too, so, um, we'll see you on the ninth.
And just anyone who has any questions, Danny Giamatti is the staff planner on this. Um, Danny, you wanna give your email address out, please?
I'll, I'll write it down.
It's, it's on the notice as well.
All right. On those notices we got?
Yes.
All right, so, we still have other items tonight, so I'm gonna move on to item three for coastal development permit, CDP fifteen dash zero zero one five, to allow the additions to an existing two-story, single-family dwelling in conjunction with the construction of a new two-vehicle garage on land located within the city's coastal overlay district at two-three-seven-six-two Hobart Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report on item three?
Yes, and Evan Langdon will give the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. On your screens is the presentation for this item. As you mentioned, a coastal development permit to allow improvements to an existing, single-family dwelling. The item is before you, as the scope of work proposes to add more than ten percent worth of new square footage to a property located within the city's coastal overlay district, otherwise known as the California Coastal Zone, as well as within the appeals jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. Our subject property is located in the Niguel Shores community, that's a, a built-out subdivision of exclusively, single-family dwellings. A vicinity map on your screen here, it's on the ocean side, generally a Pacific Coast Highway, and with your major cross street being Selva and Pacific Coast Highway. Our property is developed with a single-family dwelling comprising two stories and twenty-four hundred roughly square feet, constructed in nineteen seventy-one. This is a view of the property from Hobart Bay Drive, the, the front of the home. So, our proposed scope of work would remodel and expand that home. At the top of your screen is the site plan, the existing footprint of the building. And, uh, here of note, Hobart Bay, of course, is at the right of your screen. Uh, the property extends a bit further off-screen here. This is a descending landscaped slope, uh, the bottom of which is Nautilus Isle, the next street in the community. This is the garage, again, the front of the property. It's a side-loaded garage at the moment, so this is your driveway, and again, Hobart Bay here. So, vehicles enter into this two-vehicle garage from the side, it's the, again, the term "side-loaded", and then the remainder of the home, rear yard, and so forth. Um, at the bottom of the screen is the proposed footprint. Um, again, of note there is that the garage is proposed to be demolished and the entry orientation changed. So, where the existing, again, is a side-loaded, uh, entry, the new design would have you enter forward, enter from, or be front-loaded from Hobart Bay Drive. Walk through the floor plan in just a moment, again, there is some expansion of the building of both first and the second floor. Otherwise, at the exterior, very little in the way of improvement, uh, but new fountains, there are new walls measuring six feet, uh, except it's actually a wall and glass screen combination on both sides of, in both side yards, rather, but otherwise, not much in the way of exterior improvement. And most of the hardscape at the rear of the property stays the same. Uh, there is no swimming pool or, or really many other accessory structures proposed. So, to the floor plan then, this is our existing first-floor plan, and then the second floor, the proposed, uh, pardon me, the proposed first-floor plan. Again, you can see that side-loaded garage, variety of rooms and, uh, on the first floor. Uh, and then the changes to that, twenty-three square feet would be added to the first floor, and that's right here, in the form of a new entry, new entry to the, the building itself. Uh, and then, as you can see, a, a pretty substantial interior remodel. Uh, the overall bedroom count would remain at five between the two floors. But otherwise, you can see most walls, most partitioned walls are, are altered, a rearrangement of rooms, expansion of some, and so forth. But again, the overall bedroom count remains exactly the same at, at five. Our second floor, here's where the, the greater amount of square footage is added, some five hundred feet to the second floor. And you can see that, an expanded second-floor footprint, uh, a new loft, so new living areas, same number of bedrooms, and most of them just expand, added bathrooms, and so on. Elevation views, again, a two-story structure, the overall height would be twenty-two feet, which is two feet, of course, under the maximum height allowed for a building with a flat roof. Uh, and as you can see, of course, the roof goes from a, a mansard, a slightly sloped design to a more or less flat design, and again, over those two stories. Twenty-two feet under the maximum allowed, which of course is twenty-four feet for a flat roof. Uh, the exterior receives new trim, new materials, stucco, stone, and so forth, bringing it a bit up to date. And finally, in summary, the home is found to comply with all of our development standards. I mentioned heights, but also setbacks, parking requirements, landscaping and lot coverage, and so forth. Uh, the home's been reviewed by the Niguel Shores Homeowners Association and found to comply with, with their standards. You have an approval letter in your packet. And so, because all findings can be made to approve the coastal development permit, staff's recommendation is just that, for approval as proposed. Thank you.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Yes, Vice Chair.
Evan, good to see you again. Have a couple questions for you. So, on the HOA letter, there's a note about all the rear improvements being removed. Has that been done under the plans?
Yes, the plans do reflect that. An earlier iteration of the proposed design had a spa and some other improvements in the backyard. Uh, in the course of design or redesign, they've removed those improvements. And so, that's the note you see in the letter there.
Got it. Uh, and then the balcony off the loft, or what appears to be a balcony off the loft, but if you look at the plans, it's hard to tell if there's really a railing there or not. And the railings may be part of the doorway? No, it's the actual loft, so it's down below you, right there. So, that flat roof area that is right in front of this loft, there's those, what appear to be opening doors there? Right. But if you go out to the edge of that flat roof area, there's no railings. So, I'm wondering if this is more like a...
The, it is a functional balcony, and so, per building code, it would need a railing wrapping it, so that the differential between the ground and that second floor, of course, is great enough, you would need to have some sort of protective railing. I, forgive me, that may be a rendering error, but I, I can tell you, concretely, the building code are required, and the project wouldn't be approved until you have a railing that wraps the balcony.
Okay, so I guess we could, uh, ensure, just throw a condition on there, that the building code's gonna... that the building code's going to ensure that that gets done. So I don't think we need to add extra conditions.
Correct.
So a note for you, then? Take a look at that?
Yes.
Then, yep, those are my notes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner McCann?
Real quick, I kind of had the same question. On the left elevation, it looks like there's some, some French doors with no railing or balcony. Know if those were fixed or operable on the upstairs. So I guess same note.
And again, I see what you're referring to. Even in the rear elevation, it looks like there's a gap in the paneling that wraps the balcony. I think the project applicant is here, I might ask him. But again, I maintain the building code is going to require some sort of protective guardrail or other barrier around the edge of the balcony.
I, let me, as I look at it, and the architect is here, but it appears that it's not an accessible deck. If you look at the rear elevation, the movable panels have a wall in front of them. And the two side panels are fixed, if you look at the floor plan. So it's essentially, it's very, it's, it's a window. It's not really a door, but I think the architect could probably verify that.
Okay, and then, I just want to confirm the, all the setbacks are met. Is this a zero lot line on the, on the right side? Okay, so the entry, new entry on the left side is compatible. And then, is also the reconfiguration of the driveway to essentially have no driveway anymore. That's all acceptable per zoning? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing. And, all right, but the applicant is here, or representative. Can you please, oh, looking at the wrong person. Sorry.
I am Russell Prue, work for Stan Traffic Associates. The rear elevation, they are operable doors, but there's glass panels that are 42 inches, or I think it says 36 inches in height, to act as a barrier so that that deck is, actually isn't, is not a deck. It's a covered balcony for below. So you can't walk out onto that deck. And then the two side windows, which, or the French windows, are above the staircase. So you can't access those, they're, they're windows. They're not full French doors. So you can't go out those doors. Or even access them.
Okay. Any further questions for the gentleman? All right, well, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Anybody want to start us off?
Sure. I think this looks great. My question's been answered. I like the, I like seeing old houses being renewed like this, but still maintaining some of the charm of the old structure. So I'm in full support of the project.
Commissioner Murphy?
I am as well. I was looking at the renderings earlier, and I like the, even though the square footage is not changing a, you know, great amount, I like the way the proposed rear elevation looks on for the new build and the front elevation. So it's doing, it's adding some...
Commissioner, excuse me for interrupting. I'm sorry, it appears there's a gentleman who had wanted to speak on, on this item. I don't know if you fill out a speaker slip, but...
Oh, all right. Then I'll open the public hearing, and you can come up and speak and make sure you fill out a slip with our planning commission secretary after you're done speaking.
My name is Michael Gass, and I'm the next-door neighbor. And two concerns I have. One is when there's the 546 square-foot, two-vehicle garage, I know they're going to be coming in off the street. I don't have any objection to that, but I do have an objection if cars are parked out in front of the garage because it will impair my view and the beauty of the area I live in. And so I'm concerned about that, if there's some law or regulations stating they can't park out in front. Because that's been a problem, in a way. The car has been parked on the side of our, of our, of the house up, you know, periodically. And we haven't complained about it, but that's my only concern. If he's not, if they're not allowed to park the car in front of the garage because it's a narrow street, I mean, I would be okay with it. But if they, if there's no, if there's no ordinance preventing them from doing that, I'm concerned because they were doing it in the past. But I'm hoping that won't happen. That's one concern. The second concern is, we have our backyard that their renovation overlooks. I've been reassured by the owners, by Robert Chekko, who's one of the owners of the building, or the owner, that those windows will not be looking into my backyard. And, and so I, he reassured me, but I'm questioning that, and I'm hoping that they won't look into my backyard, impairing my privacy because we spend a lot of time out there. And so those are my two concerns. I mean, they're not going to be blocking our view because our view goes straight out, as far as the ocean.
Sir, I have one question for you. Did you attend the architectural committee hearings in your neighborhood?
No, I didn't, but I did send a letter which appealed. I never heard anything about it regarding the 546 square-foot, two-vehicle garage. I wasn't clear what that was. I did send a letter to you folks a few months ago. I never heard anything.
No, I mean your homeowners association.
No, I never went to homeowners association. I, because I've worked closely with Robert, you know, and he's filled me in on things, he's been very cooperative. And, but I just have these two concerns. And, and so, but I, so I have talked with him about this. And he told me, he reassured me that they will, that both residents of the property would not be able to see into my property or see into my backyard. And because we, as I say, we spend a lot of time out there. And then I'm just assuming they're not going to be parking in front of the garage if they're coming in off the street. Because, I mean, I have no problem with that, you know, it's, no, it's, that's fine with me. So I'm not really objecting to anything, I'm just raising some questions.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm closing the public hearing. And we will bring it back to Commissioner Murphy. I think you were in the middle of your...
Yes, I was. Well, I was just remarking on, I like the architecture, the way that they've used what's there on an older home and made it look real, kind of exciting. So that, that's a good thing, that's a very good thing. And I can understand anybody's concerns when, we've all been there, when somebody's building a house next to you, and you just don't have the, you know, you're not completely certain what this is going to end up to be like. And, and we've all had it, where we worry about somebody, you know, looking in our windows. And I, I would have to think, since the HOA has looked at this several times, that those, those issues may have come up. You know your HOA and how they do, they do their reviews. So I would hope that this would be something that would be cleared up before, you know, we get to a place where you can't return from. But I like it.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the project. I, I actually find the architecture curious in that they, there was so much mansard roof before, and they stripped all that off and changed it to a flat roof, horizontal lines. But then they added the mansard roof back on the front. So I found that curious. But nonetheless, I find that the project complies with the zoning code and is a good and appropriate adjustment as the property owner seems fit, and I'll be supportive of the project.
I, I agree, there are no variations or, or, I'm sorry, variances or deviations. And it does meet the zoning code. I understand the gentleman who came up to speak, the next-door neighbor, about parking, that's one of my pet peeves as well. Unfortunately, you know, living on, in private, on private streets, there is not much, you know, enforcement that can be done unless it's through your HOA. And so with that, I am in support of the project. There isn't anything from a code perspective or a zoning perspective that this, you know, is not in compliance with. So there's nothing here that I feel like it's a project that can be approved. So do we have a... I'm sorry.
You want me to take a question?
You can do that after the meeting. But our public hearing is in process right now. Correct. So do we have a motion? Or, yeah?
I would, I would like to move in a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Dana Point, California, approving coastal development permit, CDP 15-0015, for additions to an existing, two-story, single-family dwelling, including a new two-vehicle garage within a residential, single-family, seven parentheses, RSF-7 parentheses, zoning district, and planned residential development, three parentheses, PRD-3 parentheses, and coastal overlay districts at 23762 Hobart Bay Drive. And that's resolution number 16-04-11-XX.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so Commissioner Murphy made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner McCann. Please register your votes. And that motion passes four to zero. We will move on to item four for a coastal development permit, CDP 15-0016, and site development permit, SDP 15-0052, to allow the addition of a second story and deck to an existing, single-story, single-family dwelling on land located within the city's floodplain and coastal overlay districts at 35147 Beach Road. Is there a staff report on item four?
Yes, Evan, take it away.
Again, and on your screens is the presentation for this item. As you mentioned, a coastal development permit and site development permit to make some improvements to an existing, single-family dwelling. The project is before you for a handful of different triggers. Our subject property is located in the city's coastal overlay, as I mentioned, for the other project. Also, a floodplain, or, I'm sorry, the city's floodplain overlay district. The former requires for certain improvements, certain developments, a coastal development permit be approved. And the latter requires for development, a site development permit be approved. Project is generally located along Beach Road. That's a subdivision of duplex and single-family dwellings dating back to the 1920s. Some of the, one of the oldest subdivisions here in our city. And located, of course, on the ocean side, beachfront property from Pacific Coast Highway. So our subject property is developed with a, single-story, single-family dwelling, developed or first built in 1929. It's part of, originally, a compound of four dwellings constructed by one of the original developers of what became our city, Ned Dohini. The building's purpose was to entertain guests, for potential land purchasers and for use by his family as well. And again, one of four structures that made up this so-called compound. The, here's some views, of course, of the property. It's a Spanish, or the architecture, I should say, a Spanish colonial revival, which, among other features, calls for clay tiles on the roof, smooth troweled stucco, white coloring generally, a courtyard design. You can see an example of that, or a picture of that at the bottom-left of your screen there. Floor plan wrapping and open courtyard. And the building, of course, as you can see, has been faithfully maintained in that architectural style over the decades. The building was listed, well, I should take a step back. In 1997, our city crafted an inventory of structures that could one day be potentially listed on a register of historic resources. They were buildings that met certain criteria, by virtue, of course, of their age, their importance in the history of our city, by virtue of who designed the building, and so on. Other criteria in which, again, could one day be listed on a historic register. This building, again, while identified in the inventory, has not yet been listed on our register. So officially, and per that ordinance, it is not a historic resource, even though it's been cited through the inventory and elsewhere as meeting the criteria for potential listing on that register. So, back to the proposal, though. The coastal development permit would add a new second story to this currently one-story home. And this is the site plan and an aerial photograph to give you an idea of where things are located. The ocean would be at the right of your screen here, Beach Road at the left. This is our footprint. And as I said, you can see it wraps the open courtyard. This is the three-car garage, fronting Beach Road, that you saw just a moment ago. And then highlighted in green, the footprint, the area of the proposed improvements. Those improvements, again, a new second story, but also a covered deck and a set of stairs accessing the deck and that new second story. The stairs here, entered from the courtyard. This is our covered deck and the new second floor. Elevation views, this is the building as viewed from Beach Road, from the front of the building. The top elevation is what it looks like today. Again, single story, that's the three-car garage that I mentioned before, and the building beyond on the ocean side. And at the bottom is what the elevation would look like after the proposed improvements are made. Here's our second story, the enclosed portion of the second story, and then the covered deck here, both, of course, sitting on top of the three-car garage there. The west elevation, again, at the top is where the way things more or less look today. At the left would be Beach Road, at the right is the ocean. This is our three-car garage and the part of the floor plan wrapping the courtyard and the interior, which you can't see, of course. And then at the left, I'm sorry, at the bottom of your screen, rather, after improvements are made, covered deck, second floor, and so on. A section, then, top, this is post-improvements, of course. New second floor, the stairs leading down into the courtyard. And at the bottom, this is the floor plan. The second floor would contain a single bedroom and a bathroom. And here's our covered deck and the stairs leading down toward the courtyard. So as I mentioned, the building has the potential, per our zoning ordinance, to be considered a historic resource. SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, also requires that the historic nature or integrity of a structure be analyzed. And that's whether a building or a place, a resource, is formally listed or whether it has the potential to be listed as a historic resource. That analysis must be done and to see if the proposed improvements, if the project would result in significant impacts, deleterious impacts, to the historic integrity of that structure. So because of that requirement, the city commissioned a third-party architect, or a third-party consultant, ARG, Architectural Resources Group, a consultant group that has expertise in historic structures and urban design in general, and to analyze the building and the improvements proposed there, too, to see if it would, in fact, result in significant impacts requiring further analysis under SEQA. Screen grab of the cover of that report. The summary of the report was that the proposed improvements would not result in significant impacts per SEQA or within the context of our zoning code. The improvements, as proposed, comply with the secretary, the interiors, the standards for rehabilitation. And again, they're of a design faithful enough to the original design of the structure that it would not, within the context of SEQA or our zoning code, result in insignificant impacts. And so the project has been exempted from further review under SEQA. It reached the criteria to be exempted under SEQA. And again, it's not listed as a historic resource, but nonetheless, it's been found to comply with the intent and the standards of the section of our zoning code pertaining to historic resources. So then, in summary, as I alluded, the, the project has been found to comply with all relevant standards in our zoning code, including our historic resources section, but also the, the standards as relate to development in the floodplain and in the coastal overlay district. The structure, put another way, meets its numbers. It meets the height maximum for structures within this Beach Road zoning district. Even though it's non-conforming, and again, meets all the setback requirements and so on. All the standards for, or the improvements, rather, meet the standards for its zoning district. And so because it meets all the standards, because we can make the findings to approve both the site development permit and coastal development permit, that is staff's recommendation that you approve the project as proposed. Thank you.
I would just like to add to the staff report that, just to make sure it's crystal clear that the improvements being done would not jeopardize the structure at all from being listed... being listed on our local register. And we would love to see that happen. The way our historic ordinance is written is it's at the property owner's request in order to designate a structure. And John, would you mind talking quickly about the 10% for non-conforming structures, just to make sure that everyone's clear on that?
As I believe you're already aware, all of Beach Road is considered a coastal high-hazard zone, and any new structures must be built on foundations that would withstand coastal wave run-up and essentially be built up on caissons. Of course, all the older structures, especially this original Dohini home, were not built under the current standards, and is considered non-conforming with respect to the flood standards, the zoning standards for flood protection. Having said that, though, there is an exemption under the floodplain ordinance that allows a one-time 10% expansion on the landward side of the building without bringing the existing structure into conformance. And they're therefore taking advantage of that section of code and that allowance, which allows that. Any further additions beyond that would require a variance, or they'd have to bring the whole structure into conformance with the code. It does not relieve them from the coastal development permit, which is one of the reasons we're looking at this tonight. Thank you.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner McCann.
Couple of quick ones. So this is obviously heightened and side and front setback compliant in every way? Okay. Great. Thank you.
One caveat I should say, too. Yes, it meets the standards, it meets the setback requirement specifically, but under a particular section of the code. For potentially historic or historic structures, you're allowed to maintain non-conforming setbacks. So the structure, as it currently sits in the front yard, is non-conforming. It's closer to the property line than would be allowed if it were a vacant lot and you were building a new structure. But that said, again, you're allowed to maintain those non-conforming setbacks for these types of structures. So again, to answer your question, it is compliant, yes.
I see. And then, I'm just curious, what's going to happen relative to the coastal commission? So we vote approval on this, does it get sent up to the coastal commission? They have an opportunity to look at it and kind of appeal it or not?
Correct. It's a coastal development permit like any other, which means if approved, after the local appeal window expires, it's 15 calendar days after tonight if it's approved, I'll send a notice of final action document, and then they have 10 days on receiving it to decide if they want to appeal the decision made by the city.
And generically speaking, do they not appeal most of our decisions?
It depends on the project, but I would say generally, yes, they do not appeal most of our projects, yes. But it's case by case, obviously.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Murphy?
On that vein, the, and from reading the ARG report, it looks like these plans would not adversely impact the historic character of the property right now and its eligibility as a local historic resource in Dana Point, right?
The funding, yes.
Okay. We're pretty kind of on sand there, or are we on good, firm ground there?
We agree, yes. Staff's in agreement with the ARG's.
Okay. All right. I will open up the public hearing if we have any. No, no one wants to talk about this. All right. Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for their comments. Anyone want to start us out? Going once?
I'll go.
Vice Chair, jump in there.
This is a really cool house, I'd just be honest. I'd love to own a place like this, and it's really nice to see an addition that doesn't impact the historic value of the house as well. So I'm in full support and be in favor of this project.
All right. Commissioner Murphy?
I concur.
Okay. Commissioner McCann?
I concur wholeheartedly, but I'd like to take 15 seconds to pontificate about something, which is that this home has stood for 90, through 90 years of high tides, tidal surges, you know, weather, erosion, blah, 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 and it's still there on undoubtedly, you know, tiny foundations. So to the extent that, you know, we recognize that some of our current engineering and design standards may be overkill, just keep that in mind. Yes, this is from the engineer. But I will be supportive of the project.
What struck me is the amount of bedrooms, just all lined up on that one wing, you know, it was kind of like just a dormitory and, you know, anyway. I think it's a lovely home. I kind of wish it could stay one story, just because, you know, that's the kind of historical value it has. But obviously, you know, it meets the code and it's within its development standards and everything, so there isn't much I can say. It's a wonderful location, beautiful property, and, you know, may it continue on for another 90-something years or whatever you calculated.
Might I add to that? Yeah. I think that's the beauty of this property, it's such a rare property, it's a survivor of a type, you know, of a home, that relatively few are left.
Right.
Especially from 1920s. And, you know, we've always talked about the history of Dana Point, and that just warms your heart.
Right. And if it's not broke, don't fix it.
That's right.
All right. So do we have a motion? Anybody want to?
I'll make the motion to approve. Coastal development permit, CDP 15-0016, and site development permit, SDP 15-0052, to allow the addition of a second story and deck to an existing, single-story, single-family dwelling on land located within the city's floodplain and coastal overlay districts at 35147 Beach Road.
Vice Chair has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Murphy has seconded. Please register your votes. And that motion passes four to zero. Congratulations. Moving on, and then we have public meetings, item five, a request for historical resource designation and participation in the Mills Act program at 24711 El Camino Capistrano Drive, resource application, HRA 16-0001. And I am within the 500-foot radius, and I will have to recuse myself, and I will hand over the meeting to our very capable Vice Chair.
Go ahead. Just put him up.
Here's the guy. Okay.
Let the record reflect that Chairwoman O'Connor has left the room. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, and John Tilton is going to give the staff report.
Vice Chairman, Commissioners, it's my pleasure, always my pleasure, to present one of the city's historic residences to the commission. This is one of city staff's actual favorite homes. One in particular of our staff members is here tonight. I think it's her favorite home. This is another home built by Sidney Woodruff originally in the 1920s, 1928, to be specific. And the unusualness about this home is unlike most of the Dohini homes or Spanish Revival type home, this is called a provincial revival style, which makes it really seem more like an English cottage style, the European cottage. And it's on, obviously, a very lovely street where there are a number of other historic homes. This one does meet a number of the criteria under the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic resources. Also, within the zoning codes, historic ordinance, meets these standards, obviously, it's more than 50 years old. It is very much contributes to the historic character of this neighborhood, and it's representative of Dana Point. I'm not sure, is the applicant the owner here tonight?
Yeah, I'm the owner.
Oh, okay. I didn't recognize you. You're more casually dressed than when we met. Sorry.
Right.
Yeah.
Birthday party, sorry.
That's all right. They have, the owners have taken loving care of this property. If you can show the next slide. Again, in 1997, we have the inventory, and this was included in that inventory, and the ordinance itself was adopted in 2001. And, next slide. Here's a picture of the front of the residence. The pop-out in the front of the home, this bay area, was added in the past, but it was considered to be in keeping with the historic nature of the home. I did get a tour of this with Leoni Schuler, who wrote this report, and it really is a lovely home, it has some great character to it. One of the things that a lot of people don't notice is the type of roofing on this, which is very unusual and very much of the original cottage style, with a lot of variation in it. The plaster's very nice. Next slide. Here's the rear of the home. There is a little guest quarters on the far left here, which is separated by a very nice arched separation entry. Next slide. This is the garage, which is detached and it's off the alley. Next slide. Couple pictures of the interior, the original fireplace and original staircase and the wrought iron railing there is very similar to the other Woodruff homes. In fact, they must have used the same artist, ironwork artist, to create these things. But they're really nice. Next slide. So based on the historic inventory record, this property achieves at least five of the criteria. The one that the character, it's important and a key focal point in the visual quality and character of the neighborhood. It's representative of the town much more than 50 years ago. It's identified with Sidney Woodruff, and it represents the work of well-known architects and craftsmen. And it, again, it's obviously much more than 50 years old. Next slide. In addition to being listed on the city's historic register, it will make it eligible for a Mills Act contract. The applicant wishes to enter into Mills Act contract with the city council, and as part of your action tonight, in addition to placing this on the historic register, the resource register, you would also be asked to make a recommendation as to whether or not the city council should enter into a contract with the owners for a Mills Act contract. And there are a number of specific benefits, including property tax reductions, that the owners will enjoy in return for essentially the promises to keep this historic resource in good keeping. Next. So the recommendation is to adopt the resolution placing the structure here on the historic register, and also to forward a recommendation to the city council to enter into a Mills Act contract. I'm available for any questions. We have representatives here, obviously, from the, we have Keith and Barbara from the historic, our historic organization, and then the owner, Les, is here if you had any questions of them. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Also, at the conclusion, I'd like, we'd like to do a little bit of a presentation. We have a plaque that we can give the owners. Although it's not the actual plaque they will get, it's very much a representative of the type of plaque that they will get, and it's good for pictures. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
I, well, the ordinance program eligibility criteria, the structure, again, must be 50 years or older and achieve a minimum of two of the criteria that you went through. So it's really just, two would be sufficient, but we see that there's several more.
That's correct.
Criteria. Oh, I did have another question.
You're out of time.
And it's really not, it's not for us to make a decision on, but point of information, is there a system in place in Dana Point to observe the properties for maintenance under the Mills Act agreement? I mean, how, if somebody, you know, decides to take on the Mills Act agreement, and is there oversight on that, on these old houses?
Yes, there is. One, any permits that, any work that's done on the home has to be approved by the city in keeping and make sure that it's in keeping with the historic character. There are certain levels of work that can be done and approved administratively by the director, and then there's also, once you reach a certain level of maybe a larger addition or something, that would have to come back to the Planning Commission to make a decision on it. In addition, as part of the Mills Act, the city, of course, with sufficient notice, has the ability to request an inspection of the home at any time if we suspect that things are being done, maybe, that are not in character.
Okay, very good. I just want to know they're being protected. That's all?
Yeah.
Done.
All right. Chair?
Thank you. Are there any impacts to the city by approving this?
Well, I think, one, the most important impact is that this is a good impact in that the city has the ability and to enjoy this as a resource. And it could be included at the owner's approval on the, some of the tours of the city. The only minor fiscal impact would be that they, the fees, as long as any work done and that requires permits is done in keeping with the historic character, the fees are waived. Again, we call that a fairly minor.
Well, and obviously, some property tax revenue isn't received either. However, I would argue that if you look at neighborhoods where historic preservation has been embraced, the property values typically go up, and I would say that the negative fiscal impact was probably offset by a more positive fiscal impact.
I was going to plan on making a comment, but may I make a comment?
Let me finish up here and then we'll open up the public hearing. Yep.
Okay, thanks. And then, it appeared that maybe it was, I don't know enough historically, or I can't tell from the pictures, it appeared maybe there was a couple kind of big elements that might not be historic, specifically the awnings around the front and the roof on the detached garage is dissimilar from the roof on the house. Are those, in fact, historic? Or will those be kind of corrected if they're not over time?
Well, I would, I would agree, probably the awnings are not historic. Typically, those type of awnings, I believe they've been there for quite a long time. I don't know the history behind those, but I'd agree that they're probably not part of the historic building. The garage roof, the reason the color looks different is just simply because it's a new roof, although the manner in which it was installed is in keeping with the, with the other, the main part of the home.
Okay, so, so relative to the awnings, then?
That'd be more of a question, I think.
That's a property owner, if he wants to revert it over time.
They were installed, I don't think a permit would have been required, they were installed prior to this being on the historic register. So the owners may have plans, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
I just want to add that it's not that the property owners have to revert the house back to the way it was when it was built, or that they can't do certain things, they just have to be in compliance with the Secretary of Interior standards. And we just saw in the previous house that you could actually do an addition and be in compliance with those standards. So there is some flexibility to do some things.
Great. And now that we have no more questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do you want to come on up? Do you want to come on up?
I'm Barbara Chohannes and I'm president of Dana Point Historic Society. My husband's with me, he's the preservation chair. This house was one of at least 10, some were on more than one lot. For instance, ours was one of them and it was on two lots, so it's, but at least 10 homes resulted on 13 lots from one financial effort on the part of Sidney Woodruff with Lincoln Mortgage back in 1927, 1928. So, this is one of the oldest and not only that, but a group that was financed at the same time to be timed for the opening of his development. And the attached part of the building that you, structure that you see on the right as we look at it, is actually a casita or, or has also been used as an office and I don't know how they're using it today, could be a guest area, but the garage is actually in back and is on the, has a wonderful location, it's on the alley, so it has an approach from the alley. And it's something we've always thought should be on the register, so we're all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Anybody want to start?
Is every time I turn on the microphone funny?
You're just frowning, it didn't look like you were.
Oh, was I?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't want to go first.
I'll go first. So, I'll jump in here. You know, I grew up in Irvine, California, one of the most boring cities in Southern California and I'm happy to say that. And I can't think of any historic place or home that I grew up near, nor did I feel like the community that I lived in had any interest in being historic. You know, since I moved to Dana Point, I've really seen the value in, in preserving some of our most valuable historic resources and in this case, this is a great resource and to see a voluntary placement of it, I think it's fantastic. Thank you very much. What you're doing for our city is, you know, we, the little break that you might get in taxes is far less than what we're getting in return. So, I truly appreciate it and am in full support.
I don't have anything as elegant or elaborate to say as Vice Chair Nelson, but I concur completely and I just, I'm happy and proud to vote to recommend to council that we approve this. I hadn't seen, been down that street and seen that home and now I will make a, a point to visit it more frequently.
Well, I've been down the street and I've seen the home and when I was down the street, I would ask, I asked myself, this, whose house is this? This is just fabulous and it, and it is such a, it's such a kind of in the collage of our history with, you know, the 1920s or before and we had the, and, you know, the old Hanson houses and the Doheny houses and these are things that I hope are here long before and after all of us because they are a treasure. Thank you for all your work.
Motion, anybody?
I will be making a motion. I don't see the subject, doesn't seem like the motion, if we're making a recommendation to council. Oh, here it is, sorry. I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Dana Point, California, designating a residence as a historic resource, placing that structure on the Dana Point Historic Resources Register, HRA 16-0001, and recommending that the city council enter into a Mills Act agreement for the property located at 2471 El Camino Capistrano Drive.
I would second that motion. Can I just take a vote? Congratulations. I do have a gift for you.
Sometimes all the commissioners come up front and stand with the owner and have your picture taken for the, for the, for the record. Danny, if you?
Oh, okay. I mean, I didn't do anything, I didn't write a letter. I'm going to kick it, so.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah. I had some pictures, but.
There are more scratch ones.
All right, so continuing on, we have item six for the annual housing element progress report.
Yes, so just quickly, a brief introduction, under state law, we are required to have a general plan and the housing element is one of the required elements that we actually have to have certified by HCD, the Housing and Community Development Agency at the state. And we did have that certified within a couple of years and we do an annual update and so Rachel Johnson is going to give the staff report. This is her first time doing this, so please be kind and she will do a good job and I'm here to help out with any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman O'Connor and members of the planning commission. This evening, I'm presenting to you the annual housing element progress report. The general plan housing element was updated and reviewed by the planning commission in October 2013 and then adopted by the city council in December of 2013. And then, the housing element was accepted by the state as compliant with the housing element law in January 2014. The housing element includes goals, policies and programs, a strategy to maintain and develop housing to meet the needs of the existing and future residents. As Ursula had talked about, California Government Code Section 65400 requires each city to prepare an annual report on the status of the housing element of the general plan and this provides for an opportunity to annually discuss Dana Point's housing activities. State law requires that jurisdictions address the fair share regional, regional housing needs identified in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA. Dana Point's allocations for the current planning period, which is January 1st, 2014 to October 31st, 2021, are 76 very low income household units, 53 low income household units, 61 moderate income household units and 137 above moderate income household units for a total of 327 units. The number of household units for these progress reports are taken from the permits issued, so it's just, just the permits issued from January 1st to December 31st of each year. And the progress reports submitted for the first year of that, this housing element cycle, which was last year, there were three moderate income housing units and 12 above moderate housing income units on that. In the second year, which is 2015, there were two moderate income household units and 36 above moderate. So, we had a lot of building this past year in housing units. Of the 38 units in 2015, 11 were custom homes in the Headlands, seven were part of the Ocean Del Ray project and nine were located in the Grand Monarch. And the two moderate income household units were mobile home set-down units. In the housing element, there are several, several programs that have been identified to help meet the goals of the housing element. There's, they're listed out as programs, so there are six different programs and then there are subprograms to help meet those program needs. Program number three is to remove governmental restraints to the maintenance, improvement and development of housing and the, in the parking standard study, we, we, there was a study conducted to identify the most appropriate reductions in parking standards. There was a parking study for higher density mixed-use projects that could accommodate affordable housing use, sorry. The, the parking standard study that was conducted was for the mixed-use projects. There has not been one completed for special needs or, special needs or affordable housing projects, but that should be completed this year. The developmental fee study and the extremely low income housing developmental fee assistance is part of a comprehensive fee study that we are currently doing and that should be completed in 2016. Program number four is to conserve, improve the condition of existing stock of affordable housing. The section 4.4, the condo conversion, we want to assist the public in, in development, community and understanding the condominium conversion process, so if they want to take, and so if they want to convert, convert those. So, what we had, a goal to do was to put that process online in 2015. We are overhauling our city website at the current moment and that, those standards will be included as, when it goes live in May of 2016. Program number five is to promote housing opportunities for all persons. So, program number 5.4 is to help ensure that housing needs for persons with disabilities, including persons with developmental disabilities can be met through assistance. This is on a case-by-case basis and there are no pending requests at this time. And then, program number six is to help preserve the existing assisted housing developments. The Monarch Coast apartment restrictions on affordable rental units expire January 1st of 2015. However, the city has preserved an option on restrictions refunding future for-sale units if they're to be sold. Also, the city is evaluating a partnership with the Orange County Community Housing Corporation to retain existing affordable housing units in the Doheny Village area off of Domingo Avenue. The following housing projects have been approved. The South Cove, known as the Zephyr Project, will have 168 units, 17 of which will be affordable, which it looks like they started the grading over there. The PCH in Golden Lantern, known as the Union Bank property, which will have 39 units and no affordable housing and then Prado West, known as Rain Tree or former Majestic Project, which will have 109 units with no affordable housing. So, just to give you an idea of what housing may be added to this report in the upcoming years. And so, it's recommended that the planning commission receive and file the report and if you have any questions.
Do the commissioners have any questions first down? No? Oh, come on.
Don't tell me you're surprised. One question. You mentioned condo conversions. Do condo conversions count for the city towards the RENA goals?
If they were to be, they would count for meeting our affordable goals if they put covenants on them to restrict them. So, if you did, took an apartment complex and you converted it into condos and you restricted some or all of them and you recorded covenants saying that these are available only to low-income households, they would count toward our affordable housing number goals.
So, but we have goals for not affordable housing too, right?
Correct.
Unaffordable housing.
Right.
But it wouldn't, so it would count towards affordable if it was, but it won't count towards unaffordable, as I'll call it?
I'm, I'll have to double check on that. I know it's really about creating new housing stock and the state of California has declared that housing is a, you know, state of emergency, we don't have enough housing supply and trying to encourage more new housing and I'm not sure whether, if you're just doing a conversion, whether that would account for the non-affordable units. Sure.
How many units in the Monarch Coast apartments went offline? Do you know? I mean, I thought it was like.
That are no longer, they expired, that are no longer. Right. I do not know that off the top of my head. There were multiple buildings and they expired on all of them. The one where we kept possibly our foot in the doors on the one that slid down the hill and if they had decided to convert those and to rebuild and convert those into condos, they would have to restrict a percentage of them as affordable, but it's my understanding that they're moving forward with replacing that building, not with condos, but as an apartment. So, all of the, the covenants would have expired and I don't know exactly how many units that was, but we can follow up.
I was just curious, I thought it was like 24 or something like that.
There were 33.
33, okay. And so, when it says here, the city has preserved affordable rental, wait, no, city has preserved an option on restrictions regarding future for-sale units, those are the ones that you're saying, they thought they were going to be condos, but now they're going to tear down the building. And is there anything in there that if they, you know, apply for a permit then to rebuild, that we could put restrictions on there for affordable housing or we've just lost that right entirely?
For that project?
Yeah.
Correct. We, only if they do the condos.
Oh, okay. All right, and then, let's see, what else was I going to say? So, so we lost those, but I mean, those 33 and are we putting back another 33 or, I mean, have we fallen behind? Is that what?
Well, these are all goals that we are attempting to comply with. There's not really a mandate to have to do this. There's some grant funding that you might not be eligible for if your housing element isn't certified, but ours is certified and we are attempting to achieve these goals within the time period. There are these, all of the programs outlined in the housing element is our attempt of how to catch up or bring on new additional units. I think one of the more promising ones is the existing multifamily unit located in Doheny Village that was a HUD project and had covenants on it. My understanding is that it is now owned and operated by an affordable housing developer. They are, there are no active covenants on it, actually, they could turn that into market rent if they wanted to, but because they're a nonprofit who specializes in affordable housing, they want to keep it, if we were able to get them to put new covenants on there, we would be able to count those. And so, we've started some preliminary discussion and that would be a number of units that we could, you know, get right away. As mentioned, Zephyr is going to be building 17 new low-income units and, you know, we constantly look for opportunities, but it is extremely difficult, especially in, you know, high rent, high property value areas like Dana Point.
And then, you know, what always interested me is the income for what we think is, you know, low income or moderate income. I mean, the moderate income was $87,200 annually for a family of four, but what was low income? Do you have that or above moderate, what the income levels are? I mean, just for the.
It's based on these percentages. Those percentages of 87, so like 50%.
Right, it's all, it's all based on math and so they, they give you a formula that you have to formulate it from and, and then you just, so it depends on how many, how many people are living there and.
Well, it's first from, comes from the feds and then each county gets their information and we ultimately get it from the county. Orange County is a high-income area. Orange County is a high-income area, so you start to look at the median household income, which is, so, that's for all of Orange County, what the median number is. And then they take 120% is moderate to above, you know, moderate income. I think 80% is low, and then it goes down 60%, 50% to low, very low, et cetera. And the number that you mentioned, it is higher, so, but I think we calculated, for example, the one-bedroom units for Zephyr. And it all depends, because those are going to be for-sale units, so it all depends on the interest rate, et cetera. That all factors into what that, but those will likely be priced in like the $150,000 range as low-income units, their one-bedroom units. So that gives you an idea here.
Yeah, I, it's just remarkable, because, you know, everybody thinks, you know, affordable housing has such a negative connotation, but really, when you, you know, look at the numbers, these are, you know, nice salaries, and people still can't afford homes. And so, anyway.
Right, and so it's another great point, that some of the multifamily product that's being built, that will become for sale, it might not qualify as affordable low income, very low income, but it might qualify for some of the moderate numbers that we need to meet just by virtue of being a little bit smaller, so less expensive. All right, any other questions before I, Vice Chair?
Question. On the granny units, the overlay that we have on all of our residential, what? My mom is not moving into my house. Could you just explain how that works? And what, is it a family member that has to live in those? And then what level of affordability does it have to meet?
It's, let's say that the dwelling unit ordinance is a little bit of a work in progress, but right now, it's restricted. I think it's very low or low-income households. And as the way it's currently drafted, it's either two elderly people or one non-elderly person, but not necessarily a family member.
Okay. And that meets the HCD's requirements for low income?
Well, it would, because depending on whoever lived there, it would qualify as either low or very low, depending on what their income is, but yeah.
Thank you very much. I do have a lengthy opinion about low-income housing, but I'll leave it.
Well, I guess I need to open the public hearing, but there is just such a crowd here this evening for our public hearing, so I'll close.
Very lengthy opinion about low-income housing. Step on up to the mic.
All right, so I will close the public hearing.
Oh, and do we have to move that the Planning Commission receive and file the annual housing element progress?
Well, I was going to have commissioners comment first. Do you want to start?
Well, I was going to say, I think we've discussed all the elements of this, and it does go up to the city council, and so that was my experience, that that's what we were going to do.
Well, I had a few comments, but I'll let it, Vice Chair, do you want to weigh in?
Report, I, I think we spend a lot of time doing reports instead of doing what's more important, so I'm going to just leave it at that.
Wish we can.
I appreciate the update. There's one thing I'm curious, sir, or just I'd mention. I was noticing program number five, promoting housing for persons with disabilities. And it's funny, because I was just talking to a friend of mine who's in Dana Point, and his father-in-law lives with him, is a veteran, and the VA is paying him to remodel his house and make it ADA compliant in the space where the father-in-law lives. So they're doing a grand 14-square-foot addition to their home to make it compliant. But I wonder if situations like that get tracked, you know, relative to this program number five. And I'm not asking a question, I'm just raising it as something to, you know, be aware of.
My, my comments on affordable housing, I, I think it's a wonderful plan. I mean, because as I was saying, everybody has this negative connotation, and really, some of these, you know, income levels are, you know, especially for oceanfront communities such as Dana Point, it's really difficult to find housing that, you know, people can afford, hard-working people can afford. And, you know, when you're talking this moderate income range, you're talking teachers and firefighters and law enforcement. I mean, these are people we want to have in our community. We don't want them outside of, you know, living out in the suburbs or wherever, you know, and having to commute in to work, you know, an hour. We want, you know, people like that in our community. So for me, I, I love the idea of trying to find housing for people like this, and it keeps our community diverse and vibrant, and, and a lot of employment opportunities as well, because people can live, you know, near where they work. So, so I love this idea for, I hope we can find more, you know, housing, affordable housing to add to our coffers here. And, but, you know, it's always interesting. I mean, where can people go if they, you know, is there a website that the city has? Or, you know, or a certain person that they can call and, and find out, you know, where these housing units are?
Well, we manage housing through our Economic Development Division, which is part of community development. So for now, Rachel will be our contact. I guess I was going to, under staff reports, mention that we're going to have a new Economic Development Manager, Kelly Reinders. She'll be starting Monday, a week from today, the 18th of April. She comes from the City of Santa Ana and has housing as well as a lot of economic development background. So she and Rachel will be working together, and they would be the folks to go to. We don't really have an active list, because we don't manage affordable housing ourselves. A lot of other communities do a lot more with affordable housing than Dana Point does. This opportunity for these 17 new units will be pretty big for Dana Point. And certainly, we will be a place for people to call about that. But ultimately, it's the developer who's kind of managing that project, and will have the interest list, et cetera. But that, Economic Development's the place to go for information.
Okay, that's great. Now, I'm ready for the motion of Commissioner Murphy.
I had a question. But isn't it, the case is that the state is driving this, correct? The state is driving this program.
The state requires cities to have a certified housing element.
Right, right. And there have to be reports about the progress on, on these general plan housing elements. So it's sort of, there's a, it sounds like it's a triage. I mean, it starts from the state and it comes down, and everybody then gets their own little portion of their responsibility.
So is that a motion to receive, or?
Oh, yes. Yes, I make a, I make a motion to, I make a motion that the Planning Commission receive and file the annual housing element progress report.
Perfect. Commissioner Murphy made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Commissioner McCann seconded, please register your votes. I'm talking with my hands here. Sorry, got to stop that. And... I'm Italian, I got to talk with my hand. I think...
We all have voted?
What did I do?
Got to vote.
Oh. There we go, all right. So the housing element passes, four to zero. We move on to old business, there is none, new business, no new business, so staff reports.
I already played my hand, so you heard my staff report. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner comments? McCann?
I just wanted to mention, don't know if, this is probably not the right venue, but I was on PCH in the median south of Miguel Road. It looked like the palms were like drying out, so I don't know if there's a problem with the irrigation or not. If someone can maybe make a note of that, and I don't know who, it's not Public Works, I assume, or Parks? So someone can ask them about that.
Vice Chair Nelson?
Nope.
Commissioner Murphy?
I'm enjoying Pine Spark right now, because they have it roped off, and it's so green and beautiful. And it hasn't looked that way in a long time. And I appreciate everybody on the staff, and everybody in Public Works, and everybody who has anything to do with it, because that's just a big uplift. And I've seen people go over the fence, and I've talked to them very sternly.
Can you be stern?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Since you, since you mentioned Pine Park, Pines Park, I'm aware, I believe it's a week from Saturday, there's going to be a big service project there to, I'm not sure what they're doing. I was told bring gloves and shovels. So that's what I heard relative to Pines Park.
And then I just wanted to remind everybody that the 10th Annual Dana Point Grand Prix Bike Race and Family Festival is April 30th to May 1st, so that should be fun. And then I think that's it for us. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be held on Monday, April 25th, 2016, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter in the City Council Chamber located at 33282 Golden Lantern Suite 210 in the always beautiful and always exciting Dana Point, California. Thank you, have a good evening.